Number two, approval of the minutes from May 28th and May 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Number three, first selectmen comments, I'll hold off to the end, and number four, citizens' comments. Okay? Number five, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the assessor effective 7/119. Salary changes are funded but in the fiscal year 1920 budget, changes were approved by the job evaluation committee on 5/28/19.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Is the, just a quick question, so everything is, this is, we're basically doing everything in compliance with, I'm hearing with budget too?
Yes.
It's in the budget.
Other things on the budget.
Who does this affect?
The majority of these have to do with when we reorganized, when the director of town services retired, so after years worth of kind of review of the departments, this puts all the pieces into place.
Nice.
So it affects the assessor, the town clerk, the finance department.
Oh, great, good, so everything's finally fitted.
Everything is fine, everything is budgeted.
Good, very good.
Same goes for the next one.
All right, thanks.
All of them.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the position of deputy assessor.
We gotta vote.
Oh, sorry.
I threw down.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the position of deputy assessor into the classified plan effective 7/119. No recruitment shall take place for this position, changes were approved by the job evaluation committee on 5/28/19.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question.
Okay.
No recruitment shall take place for this position?
No, we're going to the, well, board of selectmen and the board of finance, and then the voters approved the inclusion of an assistant assessor into the division, and we're eliminating one part-time position, but as I went to change the job descriptions and the salaries, we have a deputy assessor already as part of our classified plan, so even though we're not doing anything with it, I rated the salary and put it in line with the rest of the department.
Okay.
Again, just for the future, if we ever go to move that position forward.
Does the no recruitment clause stay in perpetuity?
Until we decide to, you decide if you wanted to fund the position and look for a candidate somewhere down the road.
Okay, but that doesn't recruit us from opening it back up if we had to?
No, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the assistant assessor effective 7/119. Position shall be recruited upon approval by the board of selectmen as dictated and approved within the fiscal year 1920 budget. Changes were approved by the job evaluation committee on 5/28/19.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the director of finance effective 7/119. Salary changes are funded in the fiscal year 1920 budget and support the reorganization of the department. Changes were approved by the job evaluation committee on 5/28/19.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question here. The minimum training and experience required to perform the function, Deb, there's a requirement here having to do with something called a certified business officer. Is that mandated by the state?
It is not mandated by the state, but it's preferred for every business manager working for a school district.
And also municipalities.
Is that like a certification?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's kind of like an admin or a teacher certification, it's a business administrative certification.
Do you have extra letters at the end of your names out there?
Actually, they're numbers, 085 certification.
Now Stacy, does our current director of finance have that certification?
She does.
I guess my question is a philosophical one at this point, and I don't mean to stop the proceedings, but Deb, I'm interested in your thoughts, should this be mandatory? In other words, I'm thinking about the future, and is this really a mandatory requirement for someone to perform these duties? It's more of a philosophical question, I just hate to see us get locked into this.
You're never locked into a job description, so again, if we decide at any point in time that we want to do something else, we can modify the job description. As long as Madison is going to be shared between town and board of education, this requirement is a requirement that the board of education would look for in a candidate for a business manager or an associate or assistant superintendent with a background in finance. So again, we have a unique world because we are shared with the town, and I think that is a legitimate requirement for us right now as the landscape stays today. If it changes in the future, then again, we can revisit that requirement, but Stacy's not leaving, so we don't have to worry about that.
Well, I'm not objecting to this, Tom, I just want to make sure we understood what we're getting into.
She's not leaving unless we approve this.
She's not leaving at all, I can guarantee that.
I gotta go.
There's a second technical term there, a CPFO.
Certified Public Finance.
Yeah.
Again, Deb.
Who awards such a certificate or?
Is it state?
The National GFPA, so it's a Government Finance Officers Association.
Oh, that's more private than any out from a state entity.
Correct, it's a national entity.
All right, I'm done.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the position of manager of budgets and planning into the classified plan and reclassifying the current supervisor of account management to the position effective 7/119. Salary changes are funded in the fiscal year 1920 budget and support the reorganization of the department. Changes were approved by the job evaluation committee on 5/28/19.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Of course, and I don't know who's getting the shorter end of the sticks, Stacy or you.
Did you see your job description?
Took quite a few bullets. Lengthening?
It's very.
Lucky you.
I enjoy it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the position of payroll slash account coordinator into the classified plan and reclassifying the current payroll clerk to the position effective 7/119. Salary changes are funded in the fiscal year 1920 budget and support the reorganization of the department. Changes were approved by the job evaluation committee on 5/28/19.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just, Deb, a quick question, does this now really conclude the reorg for the fighting department?
Yes.
So we're, so this one is, we're done and good?
We're done and good, we do have a vacancy. I know that Stacy and I have talked about what that vacancy may look like in the future, but that's a single position that we'd be bringing forward. This takes care of the lion's share of everything else.
But from an organizational perspective, this, we've remodeled the department the way we want.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, discuss and take action to approve the change in job description and salary for the position of town clerk, effective 7/119. Salary changes are funded in the fiscal year 1920 budget and support the reorganization of the department. Changes were approved by the job evaluation committee on 5/28/19.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion about this one?
I'm assuming the town clerk, given she's on here, is okay with the changes?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 12, discuss and take action to approve accepting a grant in the amount of $15,000 from the Urban Sea Valor Charitable Trust to be used for habitat exploration programs and interpreted science projects.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick, I guess, just a quick question, so this is, I think this is representing a decrease, right, from what they've had before, the power?
The number has gone down.
Yeah.
And do we know, we have any sense of why, if that happened?
Yeah, there were several requests, I'm on the committee, so.
Oh, okay.
There were several requests. One of the things that the Urban Power Trust is doing now is they're putting $25,000 into the Madison Foundation every year to start to fund a scholarship account, because the scholarships that go out from the trust go through the Madison Foundation, and so the people who are in charge of the trust now decided that they wanted to start a fund that would be self-sustaining at some point in time in the future. So they put an extra $25,000 every year into that, and that's.
Significant.
Kind of fleeting, yeah, and the other thing is, they've changed the way they, like the timing and everything, because there are certain rules about how much you can take out, or how much you have to take out of the trust every year. I think you can take more, but you can't take less, and they haven't been doing it right for the last however many years. So they adjusted the calendar, and now they get to see last year's results before, and that, last year's results determine what the donations are for this year, so hopefully next year, things will go back to a little bit, you know, more, but.
Do we anticipate, though, this is steady state, do you think, like what they're getting now, so the power?
No, it'll change every year.
It will change.
Yeah, I mean, it depends upon.
Are you on the committee also, Jean?
Depends, I've been on it since the beginning.
Oh, wow.
We're arguing whether it's 15, 20, or something like that, but anyway, it does depend upon the number of grant requests, and that can vary from year to year. I mean, in the beginning, it seemed like we started to really build it up, and then it sort of fell back, so it's up and down, so, you know, you try to look at it and make sure that, I mean, obviously, the town does get the largest dollar, but clearly, there are, you know, you try to, as long as they qualify, you want to make sure that you, you know, that you give the money out to other organizations that, you know, that need it, so.
Yeah, there were five requests this year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have any sense, just given the decrease, I know Scott's in the room too, but do we have a sense of the impact that this may have on our town programs, I mean, given the less funding?
I think it'll have an impact this year on what they can do, because I think the request is around 26,000.
Yeah, yeah.
29?
29.
Any, just comments, Scott, on impact, do we know yet?
I heard.
Yeah, I would venture to think, yeah.
Because we've been, the grant used to go January 1st through December 31st, and we'd get the, get the check the end of December, but we didn't get the check until a couple weeks ago, so we've been floating everything, all the programs and salaries, since January out of our program count, and that total is right about what we took in on the grant, so.
Fifty.
So what we now have to do is make, and we've been saying this for quite a while, but with, to the, our park committee, that as far as the programs go, we have to be more self-sustaining like our other programs, and we were keeping the prices low for the habitat and supplementing the grant, which we're not going to be, obviously, able to do as much anymore, so.
So the cost of.
The prices are going to go up, and minimums are going to have to be met in order to, similar to our other programs.
But any impact of programs, meaning cancellations or at this point?
If, if the programs haven't reached their minimum, they're.
It's totally going to be pulled.
They have to be pulled, otherwise, all, all the power programs would be pulling from the surplus from our other programs that are holding their role, so we don't.
But we're still offering.
We don't want to start that spiral downwards.
Yeah, of course.
We have to make money to provide the equipment and what have you for the town, as well as the income that we expect to transfer over. So, see, it's going to be an adjustment, I did send the board then, not the board then, but Gail, who was interested with the, the science portion, that our grant was only for 15,000, and could they help? And I haven't heard anything, because the majority of our, I can't say the majority, but a lot of the expenses, the field studies, which are very valuable, but they're for the school system, PTOs pay for the buses, and the school helps a little bit, but it's a fairly big expense for the instruction, and the field studies go spring and fall in areas, parks and.
Is there an opportunity for fundraising too, would they ever entertain that?
I don't know, I mean, we struggle raising the funds for the festival alone, we're going to have to search out other grants, but we're going to have to raise, raise the cost.
Okay, thanks.
Scott, am I understanding correctly that this trend affects both fiscal years, the one we're in now, as well as the upcoming one?
Until, because they, we have to, we're going to have to reapply for the following year, so, and I don't know what the application date is yet, but we will be putting it again.
These grants are made on an annual basis, a January 1st basis?
I did, I was under the understanding that they were trying to change that, Jean, the time you made, to go fiscal year?
Yeah. Town fiscal year, so it's lined up.
Okay, so this document affects the fiscal year we're in now?
We're, yeah, we're done.
Yeah, and then, in terms of your assumptions for the upcoming fiscal year of, I don't know, what did we assume when we, for the revenue budget for the power trust for the upcoming year?
Well, the habitat for exploration has been up around the twenties, upper twenties, and like I just said, a lot of that is the educational cost for the field studies, so we may have to cut back on the field trips for the, because we're working closely with the school's science curriculum.
I'm trying to grasp the difficulty that this puts you in, because, did I understand you, we don't know what the trust decision is until sort of December-ish?
No, I said April, right?
April, it used to be the.
Used to be December.
It used to be, our meeting was, once a year, it was in early December, and the decisions were made, and then it was communicated. There was a, there was, the trustee has retired, so the bank has taken it over, basically, and there were some issues as far as the accounting, and, you know, therefore, they made us, you know, they suggested a change, so we're now meeting, and just met. And that is what's going to be going forward, so there was that, obviously, there was that gap where there were not grants approved.
I guess my question has to do with timing, do we learn at the beginning of our fiscal year what we're getting, or do we not learn until well into the fiscal year?
No, not well into, not, not until well into it.
That's got to cause some difficulties for you, in terms of what assumptions you're making.
Yeah, just plan, yeah.
I guess we can't do anything about that, but.
No problem. If the fund starts making a lot more money, you know, a lot more money to give out, but.
Right, and, and, you know, as Scott said, I mean, it's not money that's, he absolutely, he can, you know, cancel programs, not that that's a desirable thing, but there's, you know, you can control it, it isn't a matter of you've already put the money out, and now you go, we're not getting it.
I'm done, yeah. I have one more question, just because that sort of intrigued me, so if we raised the prices on programs, have we historically seen, we get less attendance, like, does that impact attendance because you raised the price?
In some cases, yes, it depends how popular the program is, I mean, but as an example, we had a program, I think it's the snake hunt, it was $5, it's like.
Mark.
And the grant was taking a chunk of that for the payment of the instructor, because an instructor comes out.
And now, would you have to charge like $50 or something?
We'd have to increase it, and increase the numbers, I mean, but historically, people don't necessarily sign up, that's, until the last minute, and we have to make that decision a week, you know, four days in advance at least, to whether we're going to run with it or cancel it, but they just have to make that commitment, and that commitment's not there, that, yes, we're going to sign up and do this, and, and sign up.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13, the following line transfers are designated as routine and appropriate for approval as a single action by the board of selectmen, if so desired. A board member may request removal of any line item transfer from the present agenda for review and discussion. Motion is to approve line transfers submitted by various departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14, discuss coastal resilience committee. Dave?
Yes, I circulated draft charge of the, actually, it's being referred to as the Madison Coastal Resilience Commission, or Coastal Resiliency Commission. Since we last met, I had a meeting with Al, Tom, and Joe McDougall to kind of develop the framework for this draft charge. I circulated it back to them, we had just a little bit of back and forth with Al, I also shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission last week, and asked if they had any additional comments, to try to get those to me by this morning, no one did, they were all enthusiastic about moving forward with the idea. I guess there's, the one thing that I want to point out that I didn't feel was my, I guess, right to volunteer other people for this commission, when we initially talked, we had talked about a couple of staff members potentially serving as members of the commission, which is a little bit of a twist on what we usually do. I didn't feel comfortable volunteering someone for that role, because I don't think that's my place, I volunteered myself for that role, so, you know, I think there's kind of two ways to approach it, one is, we could have some further discussions about that, or the board of selectmen, you know, with Tom leading the way, could have some further discussions about that, or we could move forward as proposed, and if we felt that as the committee evolved, that we need some additional staff people sitting on it, we could revisit the charge and, you know, have another town meeting to explore that. This is a little bit of new territory for all towns in Connecticut, and so I think there is likely to be changes to this, I don't think that this issue is so cut and dry that we're necessarily going to get it right the first time, so I'd be comfortable potentially moving forward as written with the understanding that, you know, that we're going to work our way through this process, where, you know, we, the way the charge is written, there's an initial kind of six-month study period, and we're just going to have a check back in with the public and with the board of selectmen at that point, to try to make sure we're framing the issue correctly, and ultimately, we're going to be trying to develop a resiliency plan, so within that first six months of intensive conversation, we may realize that either there's something in here that we, is too big to include, or that we missed something, and then we want to try to recapture it. So, it's a long-winded kind of explanation, but I guess, you know, Tom and Al were a part of that conversation where we developed the charge, so if you guys have anything you'd like to add.
No, I'd like, I think I liked the idea that you said, you know, that could, members of staff would participate appropriately, as opposed to being standing members of the committee.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm not 100% sure I understand why, even yourself raising your hand, I mean, I appreciate you doing it, but why you need to be an actual member of the committee as opposed to, I mean, you know, staff is typically always involved in all these committees anyways, so why wouldn't we just have seven people from the public and you as sort of the representative from the staff?
Yeah, so that was actually not my original idea, so I had multiple conversations with various people leading up to this, and one person I sat down with, Tom Burland, made the suggestion that it should be staffed in part by town employees and in part by residents, I think the reason he made that recommendation, the reason I think I like it, is because it's such a big picture issue, and it has a very long-term focus, that I think the benefits of having some level of technical expertise actually sitting on the committee as members is important, but I think also, in some ways, it embeds this decision-making, this resiliency decision-making within town government operations better than if we just had simple liaisons to the committee, and just in my experience working with, so I work with dozen boards and commissions of various levels, this one is a little, a little bit unique, and sitting with Joe McDougall even, no one really knows what the answers are to this, so it's not like, as a, as a staff member, that I'm just providing technical expertise and I'm out of it, I think we're kind of working, the way I'm looking at it, is staff and town residents are working together to try to frame this issue, so that's why it was recommended, I'm not married to any of this stuff, but I'm, that's, this is my best recommendation to you guys.
I would like to follow Dave's recommendations this morning, and only appoint one staff person as a member. I think our predecessor boards, over the decades, felt it would be generally awkward to have a staff member as a voting member of a committee, because it potentially sets up a very awkward dynamic, but I think in this case, because of the particularities of this subject matter, I think it's very appropriate for the town planner to be a voting and active member of the committee, and I think I agree with Tom, if, as this thing evolves, future boards of selectmen can decide to modify this in terms of membership, but I think to get started, I absolutely think the town planner needs to be more than just a resource person, actually needs to be a full-fledged member and voting member of the committee, so, obviously, I like the way this is written currently, and I'm happy with it.
Are other towns in the process of doing the same thing?
Other towns are tackling this issue in different ways, to my knowledge, we're one of the first to have a standing commission, but when we met with Joe McDougall the other day, who's pretty tied into the state level of this issue, it's my understanding that the state is considering creating an entity around the same resiliency commission concept, so we'll see, I wouldn't be surprised if others follow suit in the future, but yeah, we're a little bit making us regard at the moment.
Is there any need for a tighter connection to planning and zoning also, or do you sort of make that connection as well?
Well, so there is, so I believe that I make that connection in some ways, but there's some language in here about providing input into the planning and conservation and development and hazard mitigation update process, so I think that's a fairly tight link, and it may be that a member of planning and zoning, I have had people that have raised their hand that said they'd like to be members of this commission, so maybe a member of planning and zoning ends up serving on it, but we didn't want to be too prescriptive, and the one thing we talked about in our meeting was to actually try to cast a pretty wide net in the town to try to figure out who might be a good fit for this commission, because I found in, just recent work that I've done, that I'm always surprised at the level of expertise that's within our community that may not participate currently, but have an interest in particular areas, so I'm hoping that we get a few people that raise their hand for this commission that, you know, haven't maybe served in town before.
I'd like to supplement Dave's answer, Dave and I had the pleasure of presenting this to P and Z, was it just last Thursday?
Last Thursday, yeah.
And they unanimously thought this was a good idea, and they unanimously didn't think this commission should report to them, very comfortable with having it reported to the board of selectmen, maybe for nefarious reasons, but, but they, they were very comfortable with it, the way it was presented, we sent it this actual document to them, and they agreed with it, and were very happy with it.
Okay.
All of them were happy with it, there wasn't really any dissent of opinions, were there?
No.
So the only thing that I felt that was missing from this was the, the tie into the strategic plan, right, so that this conversation had its origins in our strategic planning conversations, and I think this commission should make sure that what it's doing is in alignment with the town's strategic plan, so I would, I would suggest that one added to, in number two, to add it as a bullet.
I think it's a great idea, I like that a lot.
So, the only thing I would caveat is, I think it's reversed, I think that this group will provide input into the board's selectmen strategic plan, and you take that input, because if, you know, the strategic plan could say, you know, we want to create multifamily housing as much as possible, so we can attract the millennial generation into town, but this group's going to tell you as well, there are certain areas of town that might not be suitable for that type of development, so you should take that into consideration, so, I guess I, I don't disagree, we can, we can link that to the strategic plan, I don't exactly know how to do that, so maybe in that last bullet under number two, so it says, provide ongoing quarterly updates to the board. updates to the Board of Selectmen, that we can include either some language in there or under six, it says, provide input into the planning, conservation, and development, hazard mitigation plan update process and strategic, Board of Selectmen strategic planning process.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And I think, Dave, you know, you do create the natural bridge to, to all the other departments that are, that are going to be involved in this. Public health, I think, is the one, big one that should be involved regularly.
Yes.
Since it involves the wastewater management.
Absolutely. And I did have a brief conversation, an email exchange with Trent. I know he sat in on the first meeting, we discussed this, and also had a conversation with Tom Hanson from the WPCA before we even brought this to the selectmen. So I know Tom is comfortable participating in some fashion in this.
A lot of people raising their hands.
Number fifteen, discuss taking action on a request from the Ahok Academy School Community Center Design Committee for funding. Have a letter in your packet.
Did we, did we vote on this?
No, we, we wanted to discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll move. I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, so we have a request from the committee. I don't see it on the map.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the subject line. It's $5,000.
I'll have to read that part.
So I guess I have questions. As I read the, the letter, it looks like they want to explore the solar and geothermal on building, which makes sense. And then there is the contact with the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, and that again makes sense. I'm not sure how either one of those creates a need to spend money. One of them is a quote on it. We, if I recall correctly, we did a similar exercise on this building and we didn't expend money for quoting purposes. And then I'm not sure unless the committee is expecting to spend money to hire somebody, to hire Colliers to reach out to SHPO.
Yeah, I mean, they say they're meeting with SHPO on June 20th, so I would think, I, yeah, I feel the same way. I don't understand why we need to spend more money when this kind of information, you know, Billy's done a great job of getting us operating costs going forward, you know, information in various forms that, that appears very relevant to what we're, what the kind of information we're looking for, but.
I was on the, I was on the committee.
Do you have any? Yeah, I'm going to try to speak on behalf of the committee. The committee apologizes, none of their members could make it this morning. I'm going to try to speak on their behalf as their liaison. It's a little awkward because I've got two hats on while I'm sitting here. Their thinking in terms of the, the energy kinds of considerations, their thinking was that it's not so much the quote for the capital that they need help with, it's trying to understand the operating expenses for electricity or whatever fuel sources are needed. And because we have asked them to come up with a operating budget and a maintenance budget and Billy can tell them what the utility costs were many years ago and he can draw comparisons to current buildings, but the committee felt very uncomfortable that the selectmen were asking them to give their best estimate of the operating and maintenance costs for this proposed building and they had no way to generate that on their own. So that was the first piece. And the, the second piece, Bruce, in terms of the charge we gave them to look for other sources of funding, I guess the SHPO was only one of them. And I believe Colliers had some expertise on a variety of other possible funding sources and, and so the committee felt that with the expanded charge we gave them, they need some help, not just talking to this one entity, but understanding the entire landscape of what might possibly help us with, with funding the capital costs.
So the percentage would go to Colliers?
I, I think it's Colliers, it's not the architect.
Has Colliers given a quote? Have they provided any sort of quote at this point?
We're in a circle here. I think the committee asked for more money than they really think they need for this, but they didn't want to have to come back. So they have estimated X number of hours they think they need from Colliers to, to finish answering the expanded charge that we gave them. And that request is, if it's not clear, is directly tied to the expanded charge that we gave them. They feel like the original amount of funds we gave them, which I believe was about $10,000, they did expand in responding to the first charge that we, the selectmen, gave them. And now we've given them a few more things to go after and they need a little more money to go after it. So let me stop there.
Well, maybe what we need to do is, is provide, is give Billy and, and, and the committee an opportunity to come in and, and speak to some of these questions directly with us. Maybe the prudent thing to do today is just to table this until we can.
I think that's fine. They, they have a July 22 progress report requirement from us and, you know, they were trying to manage that as best they could. So it's certainly okay to delay it two weeks. As long as we understand, we may be.
We'll forget. Push in July.
July, what'd you say?
All right, so we can table this one. It's fine. Number sixteen, tax evasion refunds, there are none. Number seventeen, citizens' comments. Francis?
Hi, Tom. Just going back on the Coastal Resilience Committee, and this is a procedural sort of discussion in general, are there ever expectations of the number of minimum hours expected from committee members or the commission members? People ask volunteers to help out because?
So I think, I think the way we generally look at it is that committee sets up their annual meeting schedule, you know, which would be maybe once a month. And those meetings can go an hour, two hours, three hours, whatever it takes for them to do that meeting. And, and I think we look at people's involvement on it as a percentage of those meetings. If you miss a certain number of meetings, you know, we ask you to step aside and let somebody else come in. I don't think we ever look at it as, as a minimum number of hours that are required. And, you know, this committee is going to be tasked with a big job, you know, and it's, it's not a, a short-term job, it's a long-term job. So I think that's one of those things that we need to kind of get into and find out, you know. I, I don't know that we're going to be able to tell people ahead of time, here's what your commitment's going to be. I think it's going to, we're going to have to get started and then see what kind of, you know, probably all depends on people who volunteer. Like if Joe McDougall was part of the committee, it would be probably six hours per meeting. I didn't say that. No, I'm just kidding. But seriously, you know, if we have a high caliber of people who are, who know what they're talking about and there's a lot of expertise on the committee, that'd be a lot different than if, if it's just people who don't know what they're doing and start wandering into the, into the subject matter.
Yeah. There's also subcommittee work too, that like, you know, traditionally happens outside the boundaries of the meeting too. So I think that usually is not always accounted for either.
It feels unreasonable to ask upfront that our expectations are X number of hours per week or per month.
Right.
I mean, put that upfront. I mean, even if the person has a lot of expertise, but can only do two hours a month, this could take forever.
Right. Dave, do you have any feelings about that?
Yeah, I guess I don't disagree that people that volunteer for board and commission should be prepared for some level of time commitment. I just struggle to put a number on that. I mean, because I do think the group, as it meets and begins its deliberations, is really going to decide, you know, maybe for the first six months, they're meeting twice a month and after that they go back to once a month. But I think the group has to decide in terms of executing its charge, what it needs to do and what time it requires.
If we set five to seven hours per month, that's probably in the window, I would think. I mean, who's going to argue that? Right? You know, with subcommittee work, I think.
But it's also important to know that we recognize the volunteer nature of this work and we have quarrels because we know that not everybody's schedule is going to align and members will from time to time not be able to make meetings, so.
So I think, I think this is a committee that is charting new territory and I think we need to kind of get it together, have them start to, you know, see what kind of progress they make and then come back and report to us and let us know, is it going well, is it going poorly? You know, do we need a lot more resources?
Yeah, I mean, and there is some language in here that doesn't dictate hours, but I mean, they're going to be providing quarterly updates to the Board of Selectmen because ultimately they're serving the Board of Selectmen. So that quarterly update requires, triggers them to meet a certain number of times because if they meet in two times in a row and say, oh, we haven't done anything, they're going to meet, they're going to say, well, what's going on? So there's, you know, it doesn't provide a minimum number of hours, but it does give you a trigger for getting stuff done between those meetings.
I think just given the nature of this one, that it doesn't have an end date on it as opposed to like an academy one, it's a little more deadline focused. It's just a different animal too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think Fran raises a very valid question. For those of you that don't know, Fran Brady is chair of our Conservation Commission. And it occurs to me, very soon after Fran joined the Conservation Commission, he was suddenly elevated to chairman. I think we, the selectmen and our respective party town committees certainly have an obligation to prepare folks who are volunteering for service and give them a realistic expectation as to.
Why was I not, why was I elevated? Every member pointed to me and said, if you're retired, you have the time. Everyone else said, I'm working and I can't put it in. So that's, I've heard of, you know, all these.
Hard-boiled facts.
Yeah. Well, but, but you have to commit. I mean, we're, I hate to bring up dirty laundry, but the Sustainability Committee has been struggling to make progress, I think, because we, we don't have very much, we don't have the ability to commit so many hours every week or every month. And that might be a surprise, you know, we should have had that upfront. Fair point.
I suppose what you're raising is a function of the fact that this is a government run by volunteers.
Right.
Very much. And it's both its strength, the government isn't run by volunteers, and then at times it's clearly a weakness that, or a shortcoming, that we are so dependent upon people being able to devote considerable amount of time to educate themselves, participate in activities, and be in a position where they can make decisions. It's, it's something I, I think this Board of Selectmen has lamented ever since I've been sitting on here. And again, I think it's seen as both a strength and a weakness. I think the best thing we can do as a Board of Selectmen is to find people who are passionate on these subjects and are willing to put, do whatever it takes to, to move the matter forward. And I think, tell me, over time, you've been very fortunate with most of your boards and commissions in that maybe people are only willing to commit to X hours a month, but they get involved and they feel strongly about the issue and they end up putting in X plus Y hours a month. And if they find they can't, then they drop off. And there is an attrition rate that we notice on boards and commissions. I'm going to hazard a guess, it's something like 20, 25% a year, folks that cycle off for whatever reason. They move away or.
Get too busy with their job. Yeah.
We see those as we, at our meetings.
Yeah.
The reappointments, the residents.
What I certainly think is, obviously going to have to recruit volunteers for this.
Yeah.
And, and hopefully volunteers that have, as you say, have passion.
Yeah.
Or have expertise or hopefully both.
Definitely, yeah.
But as part of the recruitment, I would think that, that, that's the question. I mean, that would be the first, not, maybe not the first question I ask, but it certainly would be the second question I ask as far as the amount of time. And so there probably does need to be some, and, and it could change. I mean, again, with no, with no history here, you may say, oh, we can meet, we can meet once a month and it may be a two-hour meeting and then come to find out, no, we really need to, to meet more often. Or again, we talk about subcommittees because a lot of work gets, gets done there and that adds, obviously, I hope that adds hours to it. So it should be part of probably the planning process for this whole committee is trying to figure out at least how, how you work, how, you know, how many, you know, what the expectation of the volunteers, at least initially.
Good point.
I wonder if we could even consider, we have that sort of standard application. Could there be something even just noted on the application or something about hours or something? We may be able to get creative here to get the word out. Or something on the website or, I mean, there's definitely some easy fixes as people are researching, do I want to get involved?
I'd say it's very likely, as I said, people come and go, you know, for whatever reasons, whether they are moving or just decide that time commitment is something they can make.
I don't think you can put a number on the application because every sub, every committee is different.
It's different.
But you can say that each one will have, I mean, an expectation.
Or maybe it's a minimum number of hours or something. Does any Salas note he told us either how many hours for selectmen, so?
It's more than just the meetings, right?
Oh, no doubt.
Hours, quality hours are after the meeting.
Way outside, yeah. Liaison signs for us, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of which, liaison reports, selectmen comments. I just wanted to say congratulations to Scott on a great concert down at Salt Miami yesterday. Very successful and well-attended and of course, it was a beautiful day, it was hell.
Yeah, that helped a lot.
I want to echo that. I was there, I'm fully admitting I was dancing there and having a good time, so it was a, it was a great event and a ton of people there. And hopefully this is a first of many, maybe this is an annual thing.
We're going to be discussing it.
Yeah, I bet, yeah.
We had, we had a lot of positive comments relative to the park. They couldn't believe the amphitheater, you don't really see that from the street.
Right.
People didn't know it was there.
Right.
They thought it was just the natural thing and we had to explain that, no.
It's actually designed that way.
So, but they, it was, with that many people there, and I was really pleased about it that there was no trash on the ground.
Great, cool.
I mean, we were, we were picked up within a half an hour, pulled barrels, barrels up and used them, which was really nice.
And that terracing really did work too, with people sitting in chairs, because I was on one of the terraces and you could see right over the person in front of you. It was great, yeah.
There was seven groups.
Scott, I thought it was a wonderful afternoon too. By your measures, was it successful? How do you evaluate an event like that?
Well, A, we had a great day and it was, I think it was a very positive event. There were well over 200 people. Parking was not an issue, even though I cleared the Route One lot just in case. Not one conflict in the crowd. People were playing bocce, they were playing cornhole, there were hula hoops that Warren brought and it was actually his cornhole game. And they were just out and people were doing that. Chef Paul did a great job with the food. We had a little problem with electricity, which we'll, we'll deal with for future events. It was just too long of a run for this, this fry layer, so it was a little bit slow. But positive, people were coming up to me and the committee, saying, this is great, why don't we do it more often? People talking to me about, how about we move the Sunday concerts down there? I said, eh, I don't know about that, how we, how we receive it, but it's just that we advertised and it was responded to on Facebook. There were families, older, older people. It was just, the full, full spectrum was there, enjoying all the different music that we're here to provide. we were able to provide.
Who are you calling older people?
But he didn't say old.
I just, the parking was, it just makes everything so easy because you're just right there. So, yeah, it was great.
Anybody else have anything?
I had our last Madison Youth and Family meeting this past week, and, you know, just thanks to our two student reps, Jackie McEwen is heading off to college, Lauren Capel will be elevating as a senior next year, and will be welcoming in our next student liaison, who I don't know who that is yet. But just, you know, wonderful, wonderful work of our Madison Youth and Family Services. I can't thank them enough for everything they do. And Tony Duena is an awesome chair. I think the committee is really looking at some really interesting issues relative to stress and, you know, the opioid crisis and things like that, and really work well in sort of that problem-solving environment, trying to tackle some of these really tough issues. So, it's a, it's a great, great group. Many thanks.
Tom, I was hoping we might give the public an update on the beach pass system and just where we're at.
So, things, things are moving along. The initial problem was that the software wasn't ready. So, the Beach Direct people have done a great job of getting the word out about using last year's pass in the interim, and if you don't have last year's pass anymore, they'll just give you a hanging tag at the, at the gate. But, you know, I've been down there many times over the last couple of weeks, and there are no lines. Things are moving very smoothly. Your staff is doing a great job down there. And we expect, I think, the 18th to be up and running. That's what, that's what they're telling us. So, you know, that'll be plenty of time for, because people will be able to buy their passes online, and that, that's going to save a lot of people a lot of problems. And that's plenty of time before the Fourth of July, so I think we're, we're in good shape. We've adapted well to the delay, and, and I've heard from a lot of people who, you know, are asking questions and.
I'll bet.
Yeah, no, but it's going, it's really well, going well because they're, you know, people are reaching out, and they're not just complaining, they're actually saying, how do I solve this problem? How do, how do we fix things? So, that's, that's been really positive from my perspective.
Are there any concerns about revenue projections for the sale of beach passes? Or is there any reason to believe?
Well, clearly, clearly, they're, they're not going to be as high this fiscal year.
On fiscal year.
Yeah. So, but the revenues will, will come in, but it'd be more, I think it's going to carry into July. Hopefully, the system doesn't get overloaded. But to Tom's point, the way we've handled it, we've had a lot of panic. You know, I got to get my beach pass, and then we explain it to the people. It may be a learning experience that we look at what I say, the yesteryear, where we used to handle it, unfortunately, being here this long, where we just looked at residency memorial weekends, because we're here on the weekends, and then we don't open up until school gets out. So, the critical time is, okay, that week, that school gets out, we have to have everything in place. But up to that point, it's like, Memorial Weekend, you're a resident, come down and enjoy the beach, you know, to show that you're the resident, a resident in town, and it would, try to alleviate that pressure. Not that we won't sell passes earlier, but they may not be needed, it's just food for thought. And I think the commission looked at that when we were going into this problem where they weren't going to be ready, saying, well, let's just let everybody come in and just have a nice day.
And we are selling non-resident passes and date passes for people still, so.
For the guests.
How is residency being checked?
Driver's license and motor vehicle.
Both.
Right.
And if you don't, if your car, you know, is not registered to you here in town, well, the lease car would be registered in Madison, so that, you still have that, but you're not the one paying the taxes. But anyway, if you show proof of paying taxes.
Well, you're, you're paying them through the lease, but.
Yeah.
But we do have a lot of, Madison residents are, they are buying guest tags for their, their guests, which is the way it's supposed to be. You're supposed to be kind of there with your guests, and the non-residents are getting charged, the non-resident fee.
Anybody else? Ask for a motion to return?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
All right.